Near Conkers City.
The up sign from you?
I believe so.
Very good. I will bring this June 18th, 2013 meeting of the Salina Planning Commission to order. We have a quorum on the agenda item number one, the approval of the first May 21st minutes, and also the special meeting, May 30th minutes. Gentlemen, are there discussion about the first set of minutes or a motion to approve?
I make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second. It's been moved in second to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2013. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes for May 30th, 2013, is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. We'll move on to the public hearing items. Number two A, application Z 13-1, a change in zoning for two of PDDI II. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe we'll dispense with the background since you are familiar with it, but the application you have in front of you started out as a request for I-2 light industrial zoning at your direction. The application was modified to a request for planned development district I-2 zoning. The primary purpose of a planned development district in this case was twofold. One, to allow you to see a plan for how buildings and fencing and gates and such would be laid out on the property. The other aspect was that through a planned development district, you may limit the permitted uses in the planned development district. And one of the unique aspects of this property is that it has no real means of having sewer service or any buildings that would require plumbing. And I-2 itself has an almost endless list of uses that include manufacturing, metal fabrication, welding shops, things that would be unsuitable for this particular property. So the planned development district allows you to create a customized district for this property and limit the permitted uses in the planned development district to what we're referring to as non-climatized storage, which means buildings that aren't inhabited or used as a place of employment by persons or for exchanges of retail or wholesale nature. Think you're familiar with the site. It is an abandoned rail right-of-way. We reported back to you that the final steps in terms of getting full title of the property into Storage Mart LLC's hands has occurred. And we also pointed out to you that because this has historically been railroad right-of-way, it has no zoning classification and has never been included in any subdivision plat. This was continued over from your previous meeting primarily because it was a combined application for both a zoning and a plat of the property. And so we have summarized for you on page three, the basic standards, and wanted to explain once again that the base standards in the I-2 light industrial district allow for gravel or asphalt millings as surfacing and does not require some middle of a landscape plan or front yard landscaping. Those are discretionary items for you that can be addressed through a planned development district. And so they're not requesting waivers or deviations to not have paving or to not have front yard landscaping. That is part of the I-2 zoning request, but a planned development district gives you certain discretion to set standards for the planned development district. Primary reason we're here and in terms of looking at the suitability of the site for development, that's really the first question you must ask yourselves, is this property suitable for development? And it is currently unzoned, and it's unzoned because it has always been used as rail right-of-way. And of course, the applicants believe that is a hardship to them, that they need some zoning designation in order to put this property into productive use. And so the zoning request is before you is to give this a zoning status so there are rules as to what can be used and developed here. As far as the character of the neighborhood, we have a flood control levee on the east with luminous neon, a West Star substation, and Foxborough Mini Storage located on the east side of the levee. They are part of the Wheat Ridge Planned Development District. To the west, the property is zoned I-2 and is owned by the Salina Airport Authority. The main property there is the Salina Auto Auction. And at the north end of the property, there is farm ground that is owned by the Brown family. And so if you look at this area, it's safe to characterize it to the east, we are predominantly residential, and to the west, over to the airport itself, it's predominantly industrial. And so the original I-2 classification that they applied for was at the recommendation of staff for two reasons. One, the property is already predominantly gravel-surfaced due to its former rail right-of-way status, and the other reason being that the Airport Authority property that abuts it on the west is already zoned I-2, and the comprehensive plan shows this as part of the airport employment area. So in terms of looking at public utilities and services, there are none that currently serve this property, but there are a number of items that are in the ground or above ground that crisscross this property. There's also a drainage channel that runs right through here that drains a large part of the airport industrial center. So you voted to continue this item, to allow it to be reviewed and considered with the zoning, the site plan, and the plat all at one time. And so there have been a few changes made by the architect, but John, if you could go to the site plan, we'll walk our way through that. And I don't know if you can, is it possible to magnify that at all, John? There are a number of notes on there that you may be able to read at your places, but the property is 100 feet wide, 1,577 feet deep, has about 3.61 acres. They're proposing to do this in phases with the south building being phase one, the south building being approximately 16,875 square feet, and total build-out would be about 49,000 square feet under roof, which in total would be about 31% lot coverage. And then their other parking and drives and surfacing would cover about 68% of the lot. There's no, there's no green space per se. It's all gravel-surfaced. The storage buildings would be oriented to face eastward. There'd be 55 feet of open area east of the proposed buildings for driving and maneuvering. The project is proposing a zero setback on the west, which staff assumes would be a solid wall. While the zoning would allow zero setback, the building code would require either that the buildings be shifted 10 feet to the east, that the west walls be fire-rated construction, or that the Salina Airport Authority be willing to grant Storage Mart a no-build easement along the east property line to allow that to be built at the property line. The southernmost building would be set back between 240 and 250 feet from Schilling Road, and we indicated in report, it's not clear to us what is planned in this area because there's a gate that starts right there, there's a paved drive leading there, but it's not clear from the plan what, if anything, would be happening in there or what the surfacing would be. Because this is non-climatized storage and there's no office space, there wouldn't be any requirement for a designated parking area or handicapped accessible parking. The applicant's architect is now proposing pea gravel surfacing to help reduce blowing dust. The plan is a 20-foot driveway here to a gate that's 30 feet wide, 30-foot wide gate there, and then if you could go up to the north end, John, a 30-foot wide gate at the north end. And the 30-foot width would accommodate farm equipment trying to get to the property that is owned by the Brown family and farmed. We would need a 20-foot wide gate at a minimum to accommodate fire trucks. We do not have a utility plan or water line extension plan at this point in time. There is a plan that shows a 20-foot utility easement here, and the plan would be to extend a fire line off of this line here down to a point, to a hydrant or two hydrants that would provide fire protection for the storage buildings. The north building was shortened under this plan. You can now see the previous plan did not have the location of this water line that ties over to Centennial Road, and because that is there, this building is now as far north as it can be. It may or, it appears, and you have a drawing there at your places, there's between the middle building, if we could scan back up, John. Right in this location, there is a West Star line that runs from east and west, from Centennial Road over to the substation, and we want to make sure there is a clear zone there for that line to get through. It's not clear, and we'd want the applicant's architect to address whether any gutter or downspout system is proposed on the buildings, but our city code does not allow a neighbor to direct roof runoff directly onto an adjoining property. It has to discharge on their own property first, and so if you have a zero setback wall, it's going to be difficult unless you have a gutter and downspout system to capture that water. Again, no front yard landscaping is required in the I-2 district. Landscaping is voluntary, and no landscape plan was submitted with this development plan. We've got the levee on the east that already serves as a buffer. We've outlined the review procedures for site development plans for you on page eight. On page nine, we've suggested possible findings that could support a I-2 zoning designation or planned development I-2 for this property, and that is the fact that as abandoned railroad right-of-way, this is unzoned, and some zoning designation is needed to allow it to be developed and put into productive use. It's adjacent to I-2 zone property to the west. It's buffered on the east by a flood control levee. There's no public utilities needed except for water, which can be extended at the applicant's expense, and there's no need for natural gas for heating or sewer service for restrooms. The property is located in the airport employment area, and PDDI-2 would be consistent with that designation. As we would mention on the next item, and with this item, this is a case where the site plan that you have on the screen is part of the zoning action. So we would want to make sure that all site plan issues have been resolved to the satisfaction of the planning commission. If it has, then staff would recommend the creation of a planned or planned development district I-2 for this property based on the above findings and subject to the four conditions that you see outlined on page nine there of the report. And of course, one of the, is not listed there, but this recommendation to give it a zoning designation would be subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And if, obviously, the property was never actually platted, then the zoning would not take effect. But we believe that the applicant's architect has made a good faith effort to display everything on the plan. That has been an item of concern for neighbors and commissioners, and we'd be open to any questions you have about our report or the plans that were in your packet. Obviously, we have the applicant's architect present here if you have questions of him.
Any questions of staff?
A question of the no-build easement, I thought I, maybe I just misheard. Is it 10 feet or 20 feet that it has to be?
Well-
Because the written says 20, and I thought you said 10.
Yeah. The idea is that the, the buildings have to be basically 20 feet apart, 10. So if you had a 10-foot setback on the Storage Mart side, then you'd have a 10-foot setback on the Airport Authority side. If you move the building to zero to maintain the 20-foot setback, then the Airport Authority would be giving up a, and so what is a misstatement, I think, on page nine there is that the, the building would only have to be shifted 10 feet to the east, but then we would have to make sure that the Airport Authority didn't locate any closer than 10 feet on their side. But 20 feet is the width on the Airport Authority's side. I believe there's already a drainage easement in there, and I believe the applicants have had some contact with the Airport Authority in terms of getting that grant of no-build easement.
Other questions of staff?
I just had, I just had one concern, and I'm jumping ahead to the related application of P 13-11A approval, application for final plat approval on the same property. And I think it was fairly clear that we needed to have, that in order to expedite everything and get it well, that a final plat would come with us, that it would be part of the zoning process, and yet we have an incomplete plat, and this is the fourth time that we have seen this application. And I just want to voice my concern that this seems to me, at least, to be a waste of the commission's time, a drain on staff, and time after time, we've had, and by the way, with no disrespect at all to David Beaverley or Troy Vanceley, whom I know to be good people and presented it well, but somehow, this is never quite complete. We just keep coming back and coming back and coming back to this. Therefore, I have a question about both applications, and it may be, well, I, there may be some discussion on that, but I just want to register that. I had students, who's dog ate their homework, and the third time the dog ate it, I became a little concerned about it.
Indeed, six of eight items on the agenda are multiple repeats, and I, and this, this packet is over 200 pages long, and many of them are.
Can't staple it.
We spend numerous hours. I think my question would be whether the mayor and commission, city commission can actually find people to sit on these committees that are willing to donate their time and when the applicants could be better prepared with the information they bring to us. In my feeling, they should better negotiate it out with staff ahead of time and bring a more complete picture to us rather than us having to come and negotiate with them in each step of the way.
That's a, that's a good point, Chairman Ryan, and I think it also illustrates or points out further concern, and I think you stated it pretty well, that it may not necessarily be this particular application nor applicant, but maybe our needing to make some sort of a statement about needing to have complete applications before they get here.
Well, I will speak to one thing as it relates to the plat and what we haven't here, and then we'll, I will just contrast this with the following item that we have relating to the Quick Shop site. Within that, and what we would traditionally get with a replat or a final plat of the property is a plat of existing conditions. And what that plat of existing conditions is, is that the surveyor who's responsible for preparing the final plat goes out and does field work and prepares a drawing that locates every power pole, every fire hydrant, every utility line, all those things, and those are, that is part of the plat drawing. What we have in this case is a plat drawing that's basically a box around the 100 by 1,577-foot area. And so the challenge for Mr. Beaverley and for staff and for the utility providers is how come the drawings don't seem to provide easements or locations for our utilities? So the, the issue here is twofold. One, when this was railroad right-of-way, it was right-of-way, and there wasn't any need for any easements for the utilities that were located in it, but now we're trying to convert this right-of-way to a private development parcel, and so the city utilities and West Star and everybody else who has utilities within that area want their utilities identified, and they want them protected by easements. And in order to protect the utilities with easements, you have to identify that they're there. And so the one step missing here is that the, the surveyors and such who are working on the final plat side of this have not done anything to locate the utilities that are there, putting the burden on staff and the utilities themselves to, to do that for them. And so that, that is, is part of why this has been stretched out and come incrementally is because nobody has a drawing of this area that shows all the existing utilities that are running in it or crisscross it. So, John, you have in there somewhere a drawing from West Star? And this may need to be magnified, but the, over on the right-hand side, this is a major, this is, actually involves the Topeka Transmission Group, and they have a major transmission line that runs from Crawford to Schilling, and that line is inside what was Missouri Pacific Rail Right-of-Way with the railroad's permission, and now, if this is converted to private property, they want to be sure that there is a utility easement granted on the plat for that line. And then this is an east-west line that connects over to Centennial Road, and then this is the West Star Substation here. But what, what you would normally have is you would normally have the surveyor go out in the field and draw up a drawing that shows the location of all these utilities, and then that becomes the basis for the design for everything else. And so this has been coming to you piecemeal because we're basically having to piece it together from all the different utilities reporting back.
But I, but I share the same concern. Why can't this just be done by a surveyor and turned into you, and then you send it to us rather than, why are we piecing it together here at the, at this table?
What I am suggesting, and what I have Mr. Norland jumped ahead on me before I could get to the next item, but if you are comfortable with the plan, if we focus on the plan with the fencing, the gates, the buildings, the uses, and you're comfortable with the zoning classification, you may recommend that the zoning be changed, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And if they never get their surveyor to satisfactorily plat the property, then the zoning will never take effect. And upon your action recommending the zoning, they will have 40 days to move this from the planning commission to the governing body and have that done, and if they don't, their, your recommendation will just not ever see the city commission's doorstep. But what I'm suggesting is that one of the options is to approve their plat, subject to all the technical corrections being made that would actually make it serve the function of a plat, and if they never get that done, then the zoning change would never actually take effect. So the, the item 2A that we should be focused on is, is planned development district I-2 a suitable zoning designation, should this property be zoned at all? Is that planned development I-2 a suitable zoning designation? Is the plan that they have developed fit this particular site and its characteristics? And if so, you can recommend that that change occur with a big, bold footnote at the bottom that says, "Subject to satisfactory plating of the property." I agree. There's no reason to be here in front of the planning commission dealing with technical aspects of plating because that's not your purview. They're supposed to hire somebody and have that taken care of by their surveyor. But I want to go back, John, to the site plan and just see if there's any specific questions about the plan for staff or to allow Mr. Beaverley to explain how the plan would fit.
Any further questions of staff? Mr. Beaverley, would you like to address us?
Yeah. Dave Beaverley, 227 North Santa Fe. I agree with everything Dean's been saying with respect to Mr. Norland. The problem we have, Earl's Engineering is the one that prepares our plat, and they're, the way they do it, they go down to the Register of Deeds and look at all the recorded easements on that piece of property. And as Dean pointed out, this is an unusual, unique situation where the railroad company didn't record anything. I mean, they didn't, not, this, this utility easement for West Star was never recorded, so hence it never got onto our plat. So I, you know, I apologize for taking up your time, but we don't want to take up any more of your time, but, you know, we're still interested and want to get this project resolved. But that's the, the crux of the problem. If, if the easement wasn't recorded, our engineer, our surveyor, our civil engineer just doesn't pick it up, he probably should have went out in the field and done that. We're going to have him do that. We went out ourselves and field-measured it, and we know there's a power line across there, but, you know, we didn't know there was a, a recorded easement. So what I gave to the, to the commissioners earlier was, between building phase one and phase two, there's a 20-foot separation between those two buildings. That's where that easement will go. So we planned for it. We just, we have to physically have the engineer actually record it and, you know, put it in the Register of Deeds so it's actually recorded. And I think Dean can back me up on that, that railroad property, they just never recorded things like that. So that's, that's the reason for that. As to the other issue about water drainage, that's a simple solution. We'll just slope the roof towards the east and not have any drainage on anybody else's property. The no-build for the Airport Authority, Mr. Simpson's been in contact with the Airport Authority. They have granted us a 20-foot wide no-build strip along their east property, our west property. That will have to be recorded as well. So those are the three main issues, so.
The only other question was the front yard, and the way I read your drawing, it's pea gravel-surfaced 100% between the fence and the street, Schilling Road.
Except for that driveway, except for the driveway.
Right. Except for the concrete driveway. And my, and is that, how deep is that? It looks like maybe 250?
250 feet.
Yeah, that's what I thought scaling it. Okay, so there's a 250-foot front yard that is 100% pea gravel, which realistically is no worse than it is now because you've got 100-foot wide strip of, of railroad ballast, so.
If we knew that something would grow there, we'd reconsider it, but I, I just have my doubts.
Has there been a legal instrument drawn up for the Browns? Is that an ingress egress for life, or what, what are we doing with that?
I don't know. There's been discussions with the Browns. I think the attorneys have been working out the final details. Nothing's been recorded yet. I think we're kind of waiting to see if everything goes through, but to my understanding, they're satisfied with the, with the direction we're headed, and I, and talking to Dust, and we do want to put something on the plat. We show it on the, on the final development plan, that there will be a 30-foot agricultural vehicle easement, 30-foot wide, from the south end to the north end of their property, and that'll be recorded with the final plat, so.
From the way I read the letter, it looks like that easement would be exclusively to the Browns, so if they ever sold the property, my assumption would be the subsequent option.
So, if they ever sold the property, my assumption would be the subsequent owner wouldn't have that easement. Is that... Did I misunderstand the letter?
I think that's correct because what if they sold the property and became a development for a big subdivision? And we've got traffic going through the property, which is not ideal. So, it's something that has to be looked at carefully. Any other questions?
Other questions for Mr. Beaverley? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate your time. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this issue? If there are none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. As concerns this change in zoning, gentlemen, there's a summary of possible findings from the staff. Do we concur with those? Is there a motion on this item that makes the plating subject to the resolution of the site issues?
May I ask one question of staff first?
Sure.
Dean, what happens in the situation of if there's no recorded easement for Westar? And yet, Westar feels they need an easement. We go ahead and move this forward. That all... What happens in that situation? If there's no recorded easement, basically, Westar doesn't have a right to be there if it becomes personal property. But they're going to want a right to be there. And so, will they take it by right of eminent domain if they have to, if an agreement can't be reached?
No. The... As we pointed out and is related to the next item, the... One of the primary purposes of plating property is to identify and provide easements for property. The challenge that staff and others have had is, in order to properly guide the preparation of their plat and to get all the correct easements on the plat, you have to know where those are. So, the expectation is that when we... To have an acceptable plat to go with this rezoning case, that plat will have to provide an easement for the public water line extension, an easement for the north-south-Westar line, an easement for the... And so, again, we want to explain and just have that for Mr. Beaverley's. And the applicants showing an easement on this drawing, which is a site plan drawing, does not get it done. It is the plat, which is an instrument by which the owner dedicates those easements. And all those easements have to be accurately depicted on the plat. So, what we would do is ensure that to have a satisfactory plat, that the city's water utility, Westar, and anybody else who has utilities within this area, that if we convert it from railroad right-of-way to development parcel, that those easements are dedicated by the owner. And so, it... Westar will be taken care of. The important thing is to have a plat that depicts where all those are. And we did want to reemphasize again that the actual zoning of this property and how whatever private contractual relationship between the applicants and the Browns, there's no relation there. And that's why you don't see any conditions or comments that are related to that. The city does not have any role in the zoning action, has no relation to the side issues between the Browns and the applicants. We simply wanted to make sure that if there was such a thing, that we didn't approve a plan that conflicted with that.
Mr. Andrews? If we were to go ahead and approve the zoning?
Contingent on a satisfactory plat.
Right. And just think along with me, and let's say that the current owner determines that moving ahead with the project that we see in the next item isn't feasible and decides to sell that property to yet another party. That other party would have the zoning that was in place based on what we did today? And they would still have to do the plat then?
Whoever... If you recommended approval of this zoning change contingent on satisfactory plating the property and the plating never occurred, it would be as if this meeting never took place. The property would still be unzoned. It would be inside the city limits. It would no longer be railroad right-of-way because that use has been abandoned. So, it could be unzoned property that would sit there until this owner or a subsequent owner attempted again to zone it.
Okay.
And again, the unusual aspect of this is, on the west, we have Schilling Subdivision Number 5. On the east, we have Wheat Ridge Edition. And we have 100-foot no-man's land in between. And we're trying to put this no-man's land on the same footing as the Wheat Ridge Edition and Schilling Subdivision Number 5.
So, a motion to change the zoning needs to include both perfection of the plat and the resolution of the site issues, as contingencies.
Right. But we... Essentially, you would not recommend the zoning change unless you were comfortable with all the aspects of this site plan because condition number four there says that development on the lot shall substantially conform with the approved final development plan, which means that they would have to follow this plan. And the other item that... We had a condition there, condition two, about a gutter and downsput system that could be modified to say that the buildings will be designed to have the slope, the rough slope from west to east instead of in lieu of having a gutter and downsput system. But condition number one there limits this use to non-climatized storage and outdoor storage. So, no other use of the property could be done. Number two deals with the site drainage. Number three deals with having the no-build easement in place before a permit is issued. And number four deals with development actually conforming to this site plan. And then, the footnote at the bottom that that is all contingent on satisfactory plating of the property.
Further discussion? Is there a motion on this item?
After hearing this a couple of times, I feel comfortable with the surrounding area being I-2 zone. I feel that Mr. Beaverley has done an adequate job trying to design everything. I'm glad that you brought up the deal about that. I think he explained that, that it's very difficult to understand if that isn't recorded easements and things inside there. I believe they're working through that. So, with that, I'd make a motion on Z-13-1, adopting a zoning to I-2 PDV with the staff recommendations, 1 through 4, adding to number two of the building design from west to east for the gutter. Also making it subject to a satisfactory plat dedication of easements to the property.
You're going to make it subject to a registered agreement between the Browns? With the Browns of some kind?
It's not the Browns.
Is that our problem?
I don't know that I can make that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir.
For the benefit of the group, that... I would recommend that you not, and in fact, would want to make sure that you do not consider that as persuasive in any manner in terms of your consideration of the question.
Thank you. My question.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I would just like to say that I have seen many political and commission figures sort of sit rigidly and take a position and not move from it, not taking into account facts in front of them. And I hope that I'm not one of those people. The concern that I've registered, I think, is the same for this applicant and for some of the others as well. And I would like to register that. I will vote for it, but with the... What I hope is a message to applicants that they need to get those ducks in a row before they get here. And while I'm talking, one more thing. The letter says that they have the desire to work these out with the Browns. It's not our... Be like, I don't know. But it just seems like another bit of weasel language. Either they have agreement or they don't. It's not our business, but I'm concerned about that. So, I'll be voting for it, but subject to final plat approval.
And the only thing I'd add to that, one last thing, is as a developer and bringing stuff in front of you, the only thing I would want to know as well is sometimes the applicant may just be testing the waters to see whether it can be rezoned versus going out and spending $10,000 to get this plat, dedication of easements and all that in there. Because you can spend $15,000, $20,000 pretty quick through the engineering and architectural firms and plating surveys, only to come in and be denied and have a $25,000 bill for stuff that never goes through. So, I would want to balance that out a little bit, that sometimes we'd have to weigh, looking at a couple of those things.
Good point.
If there's no further discussion, we will vote the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item carries unanimously. Application 13-1A requesting approval of the one-lot plat. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We pointed out to you, and want to point out to you again on page one, that the... What we had was two original developers of the Wheat Ridge Edition had been identified. They had not, at your last hearing, quit, claimed, deeded away their reversionary interest in the rail right-of-way. That has now occurred, so that Storage Mart LLC now has full and complete title. And they have... They are in a position where they can legally plat this property. On page two, we have highlighted for you in bullet points that the zoning ordinance requires that land be platted in accordance with the subdivision regulations prior to rezoning any area to any district other than the A-1 district. That is why these are companion items. I think you understand the lot design. It has a 15-to-1 width-to-depth ratio, which of course is pretty unusual. It's almost a quarter-mile in length. We have no public water at this point, and we estimate a $45,000 to $50,000 expense to put the public water main in to provide fire protection. No sanitary sewer is located that can serve this property in any reasonable fashion. They have indicated they will need electrical service for lighting. Westar has overhead lines in the vicinity. Of course, they cannot hook up to a transmission line, but would be able to hook up to the service lines. They should have no reason to have a gas line extension expenses. We have... What we explained to Mr. Beaverley and explained to you is that because this was railroad right-of-way, there are no dedications. The railroad didn't require easements across their property because it was already right-of-way. We did research and determine that as part of Schilling Subdivision Number 5, the right-of-way for the north half of Schilling Road has already been dedicated. You would have the option of requiring restricted access on Schilling, except for the one driveway opening. We will do our level best to get all the easements identified and put on the plat. So, we have identified three options there. I think the concerns have been expressed by all. And we'll reemphasize one more time that one of the primary purposes of plating is to identify and provide easements for public and franchise utilities. And that has not been done here in full compliance. And so, based on your previous recommendation, option one there would be to approve the plat, conceptually subject to all utility locates and technical corrections being made prior to city commission consideration of the plat. So, from today's meeting, June 18, 2013, they would have 40 days in order to make those items known, to have a plat, to move on to the city commission for consideration. And if they fail to do that, then this action would be as if it never occurred. So, based on your previous recommendation, we would recommend alternative one, that you approve the plat of the Foxborough Edition, conceptually subject to all utility locates and technical corrections being made prior to city commission consideration of the plat.
Questions of staff? I guess that speeds it along, and I'm all for that. But it seems a shirking of our planning duty to just send it on to the city commission. And if I were a commissioner, I wouldn't want to sit through and listen to all of this detail at another meeting.
Well, the difference is, it will never see the city commission's doorstep unless it is all those... Because what the city commission's role is in plating is to accept easement dedications and right-of-way dedications. And if those are not taken care of, then it will never get to the city commission to have to sit through.
And in essence, didn't we just... It seems like we just approved this in the last motion.
You approved a zoning designation subject to plating. This is the plat drawing that is the companion item with that. This is the... This, again, the... Just simply showing easements on a site plan does not make the easements happen. We will work with the applicants to turn this drawing into a plat that dedicates all the necessary easements for Westar and for Ms. Tasker, the utilities director, to get her items protected as well. And I think the only thing that we would want from you is any guidance or position you have on whether the access to Schilling Road should be restricted except for the one driveway opening. Otherwise, if it's not restricted, they would have the ability to perhaps come in there and have an additional access point.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion, but I think you need to prepare for public comment.
Well, yeah, we have to hear.
Right.
Got a couple more voices to hear.
That's right.
Mr. Beaverley, would you like to address us?
I thought we were done too, so I'm sorry. I don't have any comments. We'll be happy to work with staff and get that plat, you know, the way they want it. So, I won't take up any more of your time unless you have some questions.
What's the access that's there now for Schilling? I've been out there, but is it...
It's just off of Schilling, that's...
Is it just one entrance about 30-foot wide or so?
Right.
Or it's a whole... I thought it's the whole thing.
It's just the one access off of Schilling. When we had our DRT meeting with the fire department, they wanted to make sure we had enough turning radius for the fire trucks. But that's the only access off of Schilling Road.
So, Dean, is that something we need to incorporate in the motion? Anything about access? Standard access width is what?
The... This is a 20-foot driveway opening. That might be narrow as far as, you know, total access width. They're limiting their ability to widen it in the future. But all along the north side of Schilling Road there, essentially, there is restricted... Platted restricted access on Schilling Road, except for where streets or in case there's really no driveways on Schilling Road anywhere, just street connections. But we're simply suggesting that if you wanted to condition approval of the plat on restricted access, except for the one opening, which they're proposing at 20 feet, that is an option? Or it probably should at least be 30 feet to allow them to potentially widen it?
Yeah.
The total frontage is only 100 feet, so...
It doesn't have much... The curb and curves are not developed right now, so a 30-foot access, is that reasonable?
No problem.
Could you bring it in?
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there any?
Does that get enough? I mean, if it's outside climate storage.
I'm assuming they're going to be bringing boats and large RVs. Is that...
I don't know.
Is that... I don't know either. That's why I'm asking. Is 30 feet enough to... So, you don't have ruts over in the deal? Is 30 feet enough to swing a boat in and...
30 feet is the maximum driveway width. So, 30 feet is as wide as they could go.
Okay. Vehicles equal to one, max.
Guess that answers my question.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item? Bring it back to the commission for discussion. Is there further discussion or a motion on this item?
Let me start and make a motion.
I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we approve application P-13-1A as per recommendation number one in the staff recommendation. And I hear a concern that a 30-foot drive is a part of that application.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item carries unanimously. We'll move on down the agenda to number 3A, application M-13-5. We have an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is just a note for the benefit of those who are not present... This is just a note for the benefit of those who are not present. On May 30th, the first application considered by the planning commission was a public hearing on a requested comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation of this corner to commercial from suburban residential, and that passed with a four to zero vote in terms of in favor. We just wanted to note for your benefit that the Kansas statutes require that any recommendation to amend the comprehensive plan be supported by a majority of the members of the planning commission, where in this case is an affirmative vote of five members. And so without any further action, this would go to the commission as you having a failure to recommend, just because you didn't have sufficient affirmative votes. That would stand absent any other action. There's another alternative that would allow anybody present and voting on that to offer up a motion to reconsider that, and a new motion to recommend, just to see if there are sufficient favorable votes on that, but it is not a necessary item. We just wanted to update you that the action, you had a valid public hearing, there was a favorable vote, it just would be recorded to the city commission as a failure to recommend because it only had four affirmative votes.
Dean, I'd like to ask Mr. Binkston, since we went into a, convened a special session, and a number of the commissioners were not here, would it be appropriate at this time to go into a special session to hear the comments that you made to the rather short group of commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would appreciate that opportunity at, at the appropriate time. The, I'm looking to Mr. Andrew to, I suppose the first question is whether there, as you would look at this agenda item, I don't know that that discussion would be so related to that question as it would be the later agenda items. And I might explain briefly, I think, for those of you that were not here, the prospect of going forward with the vote was on the basis that if, at a subsequent meeting, there was a desire to reconsider the matter, that that was certainly an option available to the commission, and I, depending on whether that is of interest, I think we then do, once that is resolved, I think we do move into that area where I would appreciate that opportunity.
So possibly be more appropriate to take a private session a little farther down the agenda on these items?
I think so.
I would like to clean up the record on this. I would not like to send it to the city commission as a 4-0, so if one of those that voted for that item last, last time would like to make a motion to reconsider, we could all vote as a group.
I would make a motion to reconsider, if I knew the auction, the action item, if somebody wants to give me that.
M-13.
M-13-5?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion reconsideration, M-13-5?
I'll repeat the motion.
The motion would be to reconsider the motion that was made on May the 30th to amend the comprehensive plan to show this as future commercial.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just so everyone is aware, we, if the commission wishes to proceed with that, it's actually a two-step process. Your, the motion was certainly appropriate, and it addresses strictly the question of whether there's to be a reconsideration. If that motion prevails, you go back to the point just before the motion was previously made, so it is a two-step process. The motion to reconsider being the correct first step.
I'll second that motion.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion was, can, we have that recited by the staff?
Yes, the, the motion that was made by, at the May 30th meeting was to recommend approval of application M-13-5 to amend the future land use map in the comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of the southeast corner of West Crawford and Centennial Road from suburban residential to future commercial based on the following findings. West Crawford is a major commercial gateway into the city from I-135. The amendment area is part of a commercial corridor that is zoned C5 and developed with service commercial uses. The Quick Shop site has interstate exposure and frontage on two arterial streets and is unlikely to be redeveloped with suburban residential uses. So if somebody would want to restate that motion at today's meeting and it's seconded, then we could vote on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the amendment to the future land use map, City Salina Comprehensive Plan, change the future land use designation in the southeast corner of Rest Crawford Street and Centennial Road from suburban residential to commercial, subject to the three findings that West Crawford is a major commercial gateway, the area is part of a commercial corridor, and that Quick Shop site has interstate exposure and frontage on two arterial streets is, and is unlikely to be redeveloped as residential.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nay?
That will now be reported to the city commission as a recommendation to amend the plan.
Have we done that once before? We'll move on to item 3B, application Z-13-2, application for PC5 planned surface commercial for the Quick Shop location. Staff report?
Again, your staff report is broken into two parts, but we again reemphasize, as we did with the last one, that the zoning aspect of that is interrelated with the site plan that is, is before you, and because the site development plan is an inseparable part of the zoning application, all site issues need to be resolved to the satisfaction of the planning commission before any action is taken on their rezoning request. If all site issues have been resolved to the satisfaction of the commission, staff would recommend approval of the creation of a planned C5 district for this 1.19 acre development site based on findings that we have cited on page nine of your zoning staff report, which include that the vacated right-of-way abutting this site is unzoned, and some zoning designation is needed to allow it to be developed and put into productive use. We have a site that is adjacent to existing C5 zone property to the east and north, and rezoning this to plan C5 to allow a new convenience store would be consistent with the current use of the property and could be compatible with adjacent residential property if properly buffered. Needed public utilities and paved public streets are in place to serve this redevelopment. This lies in a transition area east of I-135, and amendment of the comprehensive plan could be justified and has been recommended by you. The plan that's been submitted for your consideration would enhance this entryway into the community from I-135. So, based on previous reports and discussions, I don't think there's a great deal of angst about the requested planned C5 zoning. We have recommended on page 10, as part of the zoning change, seven potential conditions of approval that would go with that, and the, the bulk of the staff report that you have deals with the site development, and we have covered that pretty well in detail. I wanted to call out, again, the deviations that are being requested as part of this planned district. Deviation number one is a request to allow the green space and landscaping located within the public street right-of-way on Willow Drive, Crawford Street, and Centennial Road to count towards meeting their front yard landscape requirements. Only about a third of the landscaping shown on this plan is on Quick Shop side of the property. The remainder is in the public space. There's a request to allow a 70-foot pole sign in this location down in the lower corner, and to have that 70-foot pole sign, which exceeds 200 square feet in area, be set back less than 25 feet from Centennial Road. And you had previously had a request for a reduction in the width of the buffer along the south side here. The driveway that was shown there that created the need for the reduction has been eliminated, and instead of requesting to go from 15 feet to eight and a half feet, there's approximately 27 feet between the rear of the building and the south property line. So I think staff would not be stretching it too far to say that primary site issue that has been discussed is the site access, and particularly the access to and through Crawford Street and a driveway opening that exists there. We laid out five possible alternatives or design alternatives for that. I believe that today's meeting, based on the traffic analysis and summary that is in your packet and the drawing submitted, should focus on the right-in, right-out only design option. And so we would probably want to focus discussion and questions on that, and then as you work your way through that and work your way towards coming up with a preferred design alternative, I think that is the appropriate time at which it would be appropriate to recess and to close session with Mr. Binkston, so that you can help flesh out findings related to your preferred design alternatives and the other aspects of the site plan. So where we are today is we have a zoning request for plan C5 zoning, we have a companion site plan. Your options are to recommend approval or disapproval of the plan as submitted, recommend approval of the plan subject to certain revisions or conditions, or recommend that the plan be resubmitted to you after substantial design revisions are made or additional information is provided. In this case, the additional information provided is a traffic summary that focuses on the right-in, right-out option, and that is why we have brought that back to you today at the request of, of Quick Shop, because they wanted the opportunity to focus in on that particular alternative. So at this point, you had, as Mr. Ryan pointed out, a fairly hefty packet of information that went out on this site, and Mr. Berger has up here, this is the most recent site plan proposal, and very little has changed, except for, and the applicants can explain that in more detail, but this is a modification of that driveway opening to create a right-in, right-out opening, and that should be the focus of the, the site plan discussion, but we would be open to any other questions or comments you had about the three deviations that are being requested. The fourth deviation, we pointed out, is that all of the driveways approaches, at least as we measure them, exceed the 30-foot maximum driveway width, but you do have the authority to approve those as part of the site plan, provided the applicant provides you with adequate justification for the need for the additional width. So with that, I would accept any questions about the staff report. So we have Mr. Stack here as well for questions, and then we would want to turn it over to the applicants.
Half of the sitting commissioners here were not in attendance at the last meeting. Some changes were proposed. Do you have any questions to stand?
On the right-in, right-out turn, is that an island out there north in the street with curb and gutter, or is that just paint, those stripes?
It's just a, an island, not, not in Crawford, but on the driveway, it's an island that is supposed to direct people to only come in from the right and exit, going to the right.
Is that typical for a right-in, right-out to be 36-foot? I mean, you want a 30-foot, it seems to be excessive for a right-in, right-out driveway. Is that?
Bigger's better.
Bigger's better if you're going.
Everybody I know that's pulling something seems to take it with them to the gas station instead of leaving it home and filling the vehicle.
Yeah, the right, the right-in, right-out details, we just got these on Thursday, is that correct, Dean?
Friday.
Friday, actually, and the packet goes out on Friday, so I can just, I can just honestly say that we didn't, we haven't had time to actually work out what the best situation is for right-in, right-out. It's, we've got some different designs that KDOTs and other, KDOT or other cities use, and I don't, I don't know if there's complies with that or not, but it's a.
It appears that the total width now on Crawford is at 31 feet, whereas previously it was proposed at 36. So this, the width at the property line where we were measuring is now at 31 feet here, and the earlier plan that was submitted, that was the full turning movement, had a width of 36 feet, if that helps you with comparison.
I just have a question about procedure, and forgive me, but we had a motion, I think, last time, that this would be brought back with a traffic study on July 16th, and that passed, but apparently it didn't pass because we only had four members voting in favor of it, so it basically didn't pass. Why are we not rescinding that motion? I'm guessing, asking, why are we here looking at this again? No traffic study?
There is a traffic study.
It's not a tra, is it a traffic study?
We've got one there. There's one in the pack.
I thought, it's not a, I thought that was just theirs. That's not a traffic study. Is it, Dan?
No.
No, and that was our motion, and then one of my requests last time was that, that Dan be able to weigh in on this as a city engineer as to how that impacted traffic off of Crawford, and we still, we have Quick Shop's report of traffic, but we don't have a traffic study yet, so we need to rescind that motion we made, or we don't really need to hear this until the 16th, is my opinion.
I didn't understand that.
Well, as I explained in the staff report, subsequent to your meeting on May 30th, where there were, there was a four to nothing vote to continue this item to the July 16th meeting, that was a valid motion and a valid recommendation. Subsequent to that, we polled the planning commission to see if they were supportive of Quick Shop's request to come back sooner than that on June 18th, in order to consider a focus on the right-in, right-out option. A majority of the planning commissioners that we polled expressed a willingness to move the Quick Shop's applications from the June 16th agenda to today's agenda, and one of those was qualified as long as we had some form of traffic study by then. We have a traffic analysis, traffic summary that focuses solely on the right-in, right-out option. So based on our polling of the nine commissioner members, we moved it to this agenda item, and we notified all the neighboring property owners in writing that the hearing date would be reopened today. And so the planning commission may legally reopen the public hearing at today's meeting without any further action by the commission, and I'll let Mr. Binkston amplify that if I've, if I've misstated anything.
No, I think Mr. Andrew has stated it well. If the commission is inclined, this might very well be the time to have the consultation with counsel that you spoke of earlier. I do want to make that distinction so as to be sure that the applicant understands the nature of that discussion. This would be a consultation under the attorney-client privilege relating to our discussion of legal matters. It is not the type of closed session that you are also able to have in terms of your deliberations and development of any findings or anything that would relate to your deliberations. deliberations and development of any findings or anything that would relate to your deliberations. This would be strictly an attorney-client privileged communication between the commission and me as legal counsel.
I would make the motion that, gentlemen, that we convene to a private session in order to receive a legal counsel.
Do we have to state the time like the city does?
Yes.
How much time do you need?
I would think 10 minutes possibly. We can always go.
Make it 15?
We can always go longer, we can't go shorter.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of taking legal counsel for 15 minutes, we will reconvene at 5:30. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
To make it harder for companies to shift their profits across borders.
Thank you all for your patience. We'll call the meeting back to order at 5:30. We've heard the staff report. We've been in conference. I guess it's time for us to hear from the applicant. Would the applicant like to address us?
My name's Isaac Rumi with PEC, the agent for Quick Shop. I have along with me Scott Canfield. He's a professional traffic engineer, also with PEC, and Todd Mills with Quick Shop Corporation. The, close that door. The site plan items that Dean mentioned for our deviations, just want to quickly go over those. It would be the sign height, and the sign, the 70-foot tall sign is actually going to be triangular shaped. I just want to make sure for the people that weren't here, I didn't get that updated on the drawing, but that's something the sign company does, so we typically don't detail it out. But it will be double-faced, so it can be strategically angled for highway traffic and not directed at residential areas. The drive entrances on the current site plan, the Crawford, the two on Willow are 30-foot wide from the face of curb. Those are a little bit misleading on the drawing because they're labeled as 31, which actually was measured to the back of curb. Just a slight drafting error on that, but they are within the standards. And then the Centennial Drive, due to the radius to allow for movement in there, and the location of the right-of-way is wider, measured at the property line, which is at 56.3 feet. And we feel that the 30-foot can be adequate in those locations. And then, you know, just request consideration for the large opening for access so that trucks aren't rutting out next to the drive and provides easier access off Centennial. And the landscaping in the right-of-way, along with the maintenance agreement, will greatly help to provide safe access around the site. And we feel like it's going to provide the same visual treatment that people will see. People will see, you know, the same plant material, and the only difference being that it is maintained within the right-of-way. So that, I believe those are our deviations. I guess the sign is we're closer than 25 feet, and so that was a deviation. But we felt it was important to keep it to the west as far as possible so that it would have view for the interstate was the intent. Now to the drive entrance on Crawford. That's in the almost identical location of the existing drive entrance. And as you can tell, you know, overall, I think we've, you know, not made a lot of major revisions besides the south end of the property, trying to be sensitive to the neighboring, neighbors, to increase the actual landscape area and the width there, which allows some more green space in the back of the building to soften up that buffer space. The right-in, right-out solution and the traffic summary provided by Mr. Canfield, we believe that it addresses the concerns for safety that were voiced by the commission and staff. And we really ask for your consideration of that concept and take in the value of the information presented. And we understand that we could spend a lot more resources and do a full traffic analysis, but we believe that this was focused, a focused effort to try to spare, you know, maybe resources that weren't going to give us any definite findings and focus on putting our resources to something that would give us findings specifically in relationship to the right-in, right-out access. So conceptually, that's what we're asking for you to review tonight on this plan. And if there are any items, you know, I realize that we did not have a lot of time for staff to review this. And if you agree in concept to the right-in, right-out, we are definitely willing to go through the design, the actual design and signage of that right-in, right-out opening with staff. But like I said, we have it within that 30-foot opening, and so anything we need to do within that 30-foot opening, or staff recommends that we enlarge that, we are willing to do that step with staff to refine the technical design. So I'd like to, I guess, if you would like, I can have Scott come up and review the report. If you've all reviewed it and just have specific questions, he could answer those. I would take that to you to.
I appreciate your redrawing of the concept for the right-in, right-out, which we felt a little love about that idea earlier in the conversations that we have had. Gentlemen, are there any questions for the applicant or about the traffic study?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a suggestion? At some point in your deliberations, I do think it would be advisable to address the action taken at the prior meeting. As I believe you're all aware, there was information available to staff following the meeting that prompted the polling of the commissioners as to whether this item would be scheduled for you today. But I do think it's important that you all have an opportunity to determine whether you wish to formally, what does amount to, a reconsideration of the prior action. And I had asked, I believe it's in your minutes, but I think Crystal has referenced probably to what that previous action was, if that would be helpful to review. But at some point in time, I do think it's the prerogative of the commission to determine whether they wish to reconsider the matter. And in doing so, I don't believe you preclude taking the same action you originally did. It is just a matter of clearing the way for your deliberations today.
And the major sticking point in that prior motion was the requirement for a traffic study, is that?
I think, Crystal, do you have reference to the action that was taken? That might be helpful.
Would you like to read the motion?
That'd be wonderful, please.
Mr. Kennedy made a motion to continue the public hearing for Agenda Items 2A and 2B to the July 16th regular meeting of the planning commission to allow the applicant to prepare and submit a formal traffic study. Seconded by Commissioner Box.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the applicant? We'll conclude his portion of the meeting, and if there's any public comment, we can react to that motion when we bring it back to the commission. Any other questions for Isaac?
Not at this time. Are there any specific questions about the right-in, right-out that you all may have?
I think what our attorney is advising us is that we probably need to reconsider whether we should even be talking about this at that stage and do the motion. Is that correct?
At whatever point.
Is it appropriate to do that at this time?
It would be, yes.
Okay. Well, is there a will to reconsider the motion?
I'd make a motion to reconsider P-13-133A, if that's the correct one.
Resolution.
Z-13-2.
As Crystal stated.
I'll second. Does a second have to come from someone that was intending to?
It would be best, that would be better.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to reconsider the prior motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. No.
There are two noes. Would you raise your hands, please, those that are no, that can be recorded?
Do you need something, Chris? Jerry and I.
Kennedy, Mr. Boxer.
No.
Gentlemen, it's been, there's a motion to, or we've, we're going to reconsider the motion. Crystal, I would have you restate the motion, and we can discuss it.
What? We don't have a motion now.
Yeah, actually, you're without a motion at this point in time.
We're just, we're without a motion now.
With the.
Now we're back to square.
We're back to square one.
With the vote to reconsider prevailing, it does eliminate the prior.
Now we have a public hearing about the issue.
Okay. Okay. So we can proceed and then?
Yes, you can proceed, and at whatever point in time anyone might wish a motion, your motion would be in order.
What time is it appropriate to ask questions of staff? Help me, Mr. Chairman, when we have, when we can direct questions directly to staff?
Well, I think it's fine at it.
Is it this time?
Yeah.
We're looking at the right-in, right-out, the ballard or whatever that is in the center. What's the typical heights that those could be and still not impede the line of sight for people leaving?
The heights of like curbs or?
I'm looking at the pie-shaped ballard in the center. How high could those be so they would not impede the view of motorists leaving the property?
The only thing they've shown, there's nothing that's in that median other than a sign, just a sign post. That's all that's there. So there's no other ballards or anything else there.
No curbing, there is a curb there?
There's a curb there, but yeah, it's six inches, six inches high. So it's more just direct tires of cars than anything. You don't see that when you look out.
My question says, from a traffic engineer's standpoint, what would be the highest barrier that you could put there and not impede the view of the motorists? Not impede the motorists driving, but the view of the motorists.
Okay. The Ashto Green Book, I think it's three foot, but I think that's typically the highest. Is that fair? That's three to eight feet.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be for items excluding signage, right?
Correct.
And what is the proposed height of these medians? It may be there.
Six inches.
Six-inch curb.
Okay.
And we typically like to put either a stamped pattern or brick in there to differentiate the material from concrete color-wise and texturally.
I did not make the special meeting, but I would like to flashback to the April meeting because I did oppose the whole idea of having a Crawford access at all. And I'm looking at the aerial photo of the present facility with only four pumps versus the new plan with 20 pumps. And I'm starting to lighten up on the idea because the problem with the present situation is those four pumps are very close to the street. And you try to get in there with like an RV and a pickup truck, there's no room to do it now. The RV has to hang out onto Crawford. Now, if I am, I guess I'm asking for, as my interpretation correct, you're now looking at canopy 37 and a half feet back. You have that distance on the little island, which looks like, I don't know, 16, 20 feet. You don't have the little island picture up there anymore, but so you're really, do you actually have enough room there for, say, a 50-foot rig to be completely off the street if it comes in that entrance before the driver has to make a decision which one of those 20 pumps he's shooting for? Am I correct on that, that you have enough room to get a complete pickup truck and a fairly substantial RV into the site without hanging out onto Crawford? Well, that's a great improvement over my first vision of the situation back in April because I was still thinking the way it is now. The way it is now, you can't, you can't get a truck and a trailer in there without being, creating a hazard in that first lane. So I think this is a much better plan than the present facility. I was still a little surprised to see you go from 16 pumps to 20, but it does look like you have pretty good circulation space around them.
Yeah. Todd would have to answer the 20 pumps. That's out of my league, so. But the, the expanding into the right-of-way is also what aids our circulation, and we feel that's important, too, for the same reasons you addressed, mentioned.
Dan, my question would be to you. Several commissioners have expressed interest in your blessing, I suppose, on this right-in, right-out, or are you not having an input on this right-in, right-out? In your experience, does this alleviate some of the concern that the commission had from the last meeting of where the accidents would come from? I'm completely fine with the findings that were found in the report that was given to us, which is what I would anticipate, that if you remove the left turning out and the left turning in, you would get rid of the majority of the accidents, which I believe is what the report has indicated. I may be in the minority, and then I'll let you speak on there, but I just can't believe that we would want to continue a very expensive traffic study. And I believe that the traffic study, using common sense, would tell you that by taking out a left out and a left in, would, this would be, could be, by allowing Quick Shop to have their entrance still, this would somewhat solve that situation. Would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, we, just right-in, right, it's, the concept is pretty good. It does eliminate, they talked about how many conflict points eliminates. It eliminates quite a few. And if drivers abide by those, or abide the right-in, right-out philosophy and the signage and the making sure they don't try to make a left and a U-turn, that's the problem. And the, I guess Mr. Canfield talked about that the last time, and said they typically struggle to work. So that's, that's the main thing that we struggle with on our end, is that if they worked like they say they do, or like if they just worked and everybody abided them, they'd be much better. But the problem is you have people that, they're wanting to take a left turn, they don't see it. And by the time they are dodging a lot of cars, they're busting through there, and oh my gosh, they're going to hit the curb. So they're just going to drive right over it, bust the sign down. That's just, that's the way it happens. You see a lot of black marks on them, you see a lot of, you know, the signs we have to replace all the time. They fall down, they're broke. That's just part of the deal now. Granted, maybe over time that would get better. They are, they are something you see in bigger cities. So it's not a uncommon approach, it's just there are drawbacks to it, and it doesn't solve all the problems that you're, we wished it would solve, I guess. You can physically try to make them with barriers and very noticeable, but at the end of the day, somebody still goes out and can easily make a U-turn on Crawford or try to make a dart through the traffic. You can still do that with, I don't know if there's a way to design it where you can't. So that's something we can work with them on if you guys want that approach. We can work with them to design the best right-in, right-out we can get. But at the end of the day, there's still going to be, drivers will still do what they will, so.
In that vein, recognizing that my experience is anecdotal, and it happened to one person, and perhaps because of my lack of observational skills, and the fact that I was in the city, so I'm just a country heck, don't know how to manipulate this stuff, but I darn near took out the bottom of my vehicle on one of those six-inch medians that I didn't see. And wasn't a very pleasant experience. And the possibility exists that somebody with a little bit higher wheelbase can just go right on over it, as Dan Stack indicates. I've got problems with that, so.
Hence my question about height.
Yes.
And that's a good question. Intelligent question.
Mr. Stack, you've seen a number of formal traffic studies. Do you think that the conclusions that we've been brought by the applicant would vary? I mean, it looks pretty common sense to me, what we've, what we've got in the record here. Maybe the applicant would like to review that if all the commissioners aren't familiar with their conclusions, but yeah, just the, it made pretty much common sense to me. But, yeah, just the, it made pretty much common sense to me.
Traffic summary, just, um, stop short of recommendations, and then distribution of trips. You know, who's going to use what driveway? That's usually the thing that they may have some pretty good information on based on some of their... I mean, it sounds like they have a lot of sites around the US. They have a lot of, or around the state or wherever, they have a lot of experience with the number of vehicles that travel into their facilities. So, it seems like they could have gone a step further to say, okay, we're going to have this many vehicles using these driveways and just the distribution thereof. So, that's, that's really the main benefit you'd get from a traffic impact study, as well as kind of an impact to the, to the neighboring properties in the area around there. But it's, I mean, you may be, you may not see a whole lot. The right-in, right-out still might be the best solution for that. I mean, that's, that's, that could be what happens, but you don't know that until you get the traffic impact study. So, I guess we, we don't want to negate that. It's nice to have them, and sometimes they're just more helpful for defense of allowing access or not for precedent in the city and the commissioners, we feel like. But at the end of the day, the right-in, right-out still might be, you know, you don't know that until you do it, but it could be the same conclusion.
One of my concerns along the same vein as my previous comments is that I see the planning commission and city commission's primary duty as public safety and public good for all concerned. And I'd rather have a system, which I think we voted on last time, which would guarantee that rather than one that we think might work. I think that's enough said.
How do you do a traffic study to determine how many people would go out and use Centennial Road when there's no way for them to use that now? How would we know?
I'll let Scott answer that.
I'll handle that one. It's a rough guess. Since it is not an existing driveway, what we would look at is basically how many, how much traffic is using what's now the right-in, right-out, the existing driveway there? What type of usage is being used? And then we would look at traffic volumes around the area to just try and come up with our, a rough approximation of, let's say, twenty percent came up Centennial, then turned right, and then pulled into the site versus the, the rest that came down Crawford and turned into the site. We could look at, uh, in, as part of the study, you can really get very detailed and do what we call an origin and destination study, which would be very unusual for a facility of this size. Usually, those are reserved if you're doing a major, major development. But basically, in that case, you're doing a license plate survey. You keep track of every license plate. You set somebody out to record every license plate. You have basically an origin spot, which would be Centennial, let's say. Then you would record where that traffic, where those vehicles went to. Did they turn and go west? Did they turn and go east? When they turned and went east, did they turn into the facility or destinations further down the road? But in most cases, as part of the traffic impact study, I would work with city staff to kind of come up with some percentages that we felt were reasonable to distribute traffic throughout the area.
Again, my feelings were probably pretty well-known last time on traffic studies. I don't, not disrespecting your industry, but...
Sure.
And it really gets goofy when you're trying to determine what I'm going to do when I pull into the Quick Shop of where I'm going to go, whether, whether it's blocked or whether there is, where I'm going to go a road that doesn't even exist.
Correct. And, and as far as the right-in, right-out, six inches, eight inches, I've seen some that go as high as twelve inches tall. I've, and some that are done with a roll-type curb to allow bigger vehicle access, which kind of defeats the purpose a little bit. But I've also seen facilities where they've put the median in the middle. You're going to find that one determined driver who's got a four-by-four that he is adamant that he is going to turn left out of that site. And unless there's an officer sitting right there that's going to write him up a ticket, which you run into a few legal issues there on whether or not you really can write him up a ticket for exiting a private driveway. But he can basically hop the curbs and continue to the left.
You're talking about a, a center median.
Correct. If you put in a center median, you would find that there would be some drivers that that's just what they do.
Is your, in your drawing that you have here, is the Quick Shop's interpretation of putting a small curb, or are you against having something that's two feet in height, even though we took out the bottom of his car with one of those ones? But is your interpretation of having that to where it can be visually seen versus if it was...
I would, I know that there is, I, I think you're creating an object. I, I think the height-wise, you want to be very careful about what type of height you would put in on a type of median because you might be putting in an actual object that if somebody were to have an accident, have a crash into it, you might be taking on some liability by having basically a non-breakaway type barrier there.
That's a good point.
I think a lot of those decisions are sometimes made, well, I guess the, the other thing that this, as Scott mentioned, if there were a center median, this is already set up for a right-in, right-out, which the center median would prohibit the left-turn movements in the future as well. So, it is, it is a plan, a, a plan that coincides with any future improvements there. But the, the intent of the right-in, right-out and the, the traffic signage here is not to, not to try to predict what people's driving habits are. We know people run stop signs. That's not legal, but we can't always predict, you know, fix that. But when we put the proper signage and have everything laid out in the proper dimensions to allow circulation in and out, and we're directing it, if we have someone that chooses to, you know, drive over a center median, we can't control some of those items. But when we put things in place to do the best thing that we have available, then that, that's our goal really with this solution, is to, to take out the safety concerns of the left-turn movements. And we feel that that'll do benefit to the site because it gives you a possible in and out. And a traffic analysis, if we go in-depth and say, there's, if we determine what percentage of vehicles are leaving each entrance, then, am I correct that you would then look at, if you were looking at from a safety standpoint, you'd say, how many accidents have I had here? And you've got, if you say, assume there's fifty percent of the people leaving out of this entrance, then if we've only had one accident at this intersection, then we're not really finding a lot of information there because it's not a current issue.
Yeah, I think what Isaac's trying to say is a right-in, right-out here is an, an access management-type thing. We are trying to reduce the amount of access onto the site. And based on the type of accident that had occurred there previously, it wouldn't have been prevented if this were a right-in, right-out. And so, based on that, the analysis of this driveway wouldn't have really come out for safety reasons and mentioned that we would need a right-in, right-out at this location. And if we saw a significant number of left-turn accidents at this particular driveway, that would be one of the things that would flag, to me, as a traffic engineer, we would need to look at maybe going to a right-in, right-out scenario.
If I may. I have a couple of things, and, and this would be more directed to staff. I, I would suggest that, and it seems like we're just playing with hypothetical situations, what ifs? We don't have anything concrete to direct us. But one concern I have is with the right-out is it's awfully close to Willow, which means with a sweeping right-out, the speeds will be a little greater coming out, I would think. And then you're really close to Willow Drive, people turning right and left off of Willow. Will that give people turning right and left off of Willow time to react as someone coming right out of Quick Trip? You don't have to answer that because I know we don't have any information to, to really study it. But, but you don't have any time. Somebody pulls out, and you've got twenty, thirty feet there is all to make a decision. I didn't see me coming down Crawford from the west, but I didn't see somebody turning out of that right-out. It might be a source of accidents. I guess that's for insurance companies to work out fault in that situation. The more, and that's just my opinion. Now, the more important question is, and it deals with some of the recommendations staff, I assume that the drainage study has been conducted on this development to satisfy the city's concern that there might be water backed up as a result of the increased paving onto the property owners to the south. Is that correct?
Dean, I know that's one of the conditions of that.
That is a recommended condition of, of plaid approval to confirm the capacity of... What is being proposed here is to utilize the city retained right-of-way on Centennial Road as the detention area.
And that'll, but it'll still take a drainage study to figure out.
It will still take a drainage study to confirm that that has the capacity.
May I add? We, we submitted with the initial site plan, we submitted a drainage plan at the level of detail we are in the plans that showed the areas that we're going. And the direction that we were using as guidance was to not send any more of the existing than what's existing on the site going to the inlet on Willow. And so, our plan indicated that, and the staff asked for more information about the remaining drainage and some additional calculations. And upon, you know, finalization, finalization of the site plan, we're definitely willing to provide that with our final plans.
This may not be intuitive for everybody here, and I don't know if you can blow that up, John, but just to explain, everybody, just exactly how this works. The drainage is going to come off the site, and it's going to go into this depressed ditch along Schilling Road. There's going to be a driveway here and a culvert. That water will be detained, and then it will discharge, and it will come all the way down this ditch, and then it will come to thi, all the way to this point. And at this point, it will cross under Centennial Road and go through the levee and go into Dry Creek. So, the, if you want, if you will, the, the detention system or the linear detention basin stretches all the way from up there and down to this location. So, the water that will be detained there along Centennial Road will then go under the culvert and all the way down here. That's where it will actually discharge into Dry Creek.
I just, I just noticed those properties directly solidly put low in the backyard. I just wanted to make sure that they don't get water backed up on them. It was my concern.
It will have, they will have to demonstrate that without modification that this system along here will have the capacity to handle that.
Thank you.
Staff has seven, seven recommendations for you. Are you comfortable with all seven of those in, in, under this item? Page ten in our report after the staff...
It's page ten of the zoning report, and it faces the vicinity map.
No, no, we don't have any concerns with the items listed.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? For staff?
Dan, could you give me, we've heard a lot of talk about traffic in this area and, and accidents and that thing. Can you give me some kind of sense of where, where this location is compared to, say, the hottest accident spot in the city? What is that, Cloud and Ninth is, um, can, can you give me some kind of rela, is this like in the top ten sites in the, in the city for accidents?
See, I don't, I don't know how that compares as far as, and Cloud and Ninth has more. I just, it said there are fifteen crashes in the past three years, so it's, um, I don't know. It's hard, I could, I could, I could get that if you needed it.
Well, I guess my point is, is that I, I've been to that corner, and I, I agree. I've driven that quite a few times, and that's a pain getting out of there and turning left. But I can't remember ever seeing an accident there, whereas I, at, say, Cloud and Ninth, that's a fairly common rear-end place there. Anyway, I, it doesn't, and the other thing I wanted to say is I certainly have respect for Commissioner Kennedy's and Commissioner Boxer's reservations about rescinding this motion. But I, I think at some point, you know, we've certainly decided things like this, such as the McDonald's that we did recently. You know, that, that had some turn-in and turn-out things, and, and, you know, and again, a very, very busy intersection. I, I don't think that this is rocket science, and I, I have to admit that I, I think that, that the right, the right turn, right, right-hand turn-in, turn-out option is a good, is a good alternative.
One thing, I'm, I'm looking at this drawing. It looks to me like in the beginning, we had, we had the trucks going in behind the building and, and exiting off Crawford Street, and that is going to be eliminated. The right-in, right-out definitely should eliminate any, any truck, truck, turning left on the, onto Crawford.
Correct.
That, that is definitely a, a must, and this should eliminate that. I like that.
Thank you.
Plus, that canopy looks like it hangs over a little bit too far for a truck to get out to the driveway.
Uh, there are, is it fifteen-foot, eighteen-foot clearance?
Thirteen-six.
Other discussion for the applicant? Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this item number thirteen A we are on? And if there is not, I'll bring it back to commission for discussion on, I guess this is thirteen B, on the change of the zoning district classification. Is there more discussion? More motion on this item? Have we solved all the site issues? Is there a discussion of whether right-in, right-out is a compromise?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to remind the commission that if, in any motion, this is one I think it would be, want to be sure to make appropriate findings. And if there is any benefit to simply opening up, a consideration of potential findings, whether that be here or deliberating privately, that is your prerogative.
And the staff has given us a summary of possible findings, but...
We have made a summary of possible findings in support of the zoning change in terms of the individual aspects of the site plan. The four major aspects of that are the request for the taller sign, the request for the wider driveway widths, the request to be able to count landscaping placed in the right-of-way as meeting the front yard landscape requirement. And then, most significantly, findings in support of whatever design alternative you would recommend for the Crawford Street driveway. I think that would be the most significant. And not wanting to anticipate ahead of time what direction you might go with that, we have worked up some possible findings related to those aspects that Mr. Bankston could go over with you briefly in a closed session to see if that reflects the majority will of the planning commission.
I would move that we convene in a private session to hear from our counsel, Mr. Bankston.
Second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will take that for fifteen minutes, and we'll be back at six-twenty-five.
Low-skill worker makes less money or loses their job altogether.
Well, it...
I'll call the meeting back to order here at six-twenty-five. Thank you all again for your patience in letting us deliberate. Gentlemen, we have brought this back to the commission, and we are on item thirteen B as concerns the change in zoning district classification to PC five. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, may I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to jump in quickly, if I may, just as a point of clarification, and I'll refer to Mr. Andrew. Am I correct? Am I correct that as the planning commission would consider the zoning issue that incumbent in that is consideration of the site plan and that any of these details related to the site plan, even beyond the Crawford access, should be addressed simultaneously or in...
And it's assumed that if, if the recommendation is to approve the zoning, that that recommendation would approve the zoning and the site plan submitted and that the findings made would be in support of the zoning change as well as the site plan as submitted. So it could be done in a single motion.
We'll combine the two and the motion will include both the...
Both sets of findings.
Okay. Very good. And I think we've had adequate discussion on both, both items, so we will discuss it as a commission, whether or not all the site issues have been resolved. Are there any questions or discussion about the site issues? We have a 70-foot sign. We have in-and-out or some other version of the lands, of the cut. We have some landscaping issues. And what other changes were there?
The driveways that were in excess of 30 feet in width.
In excess of 30 feet. If there's no discussion, is there a motion?
I'll take a stab at one. I'll make a motion on application P-13-13-3-13B. For approval of the rezoning as well as the acceptance of the three, I believe there were three, am I correct on that?
There were three deviations requested.
Three deviations requested. My support on that, facts and finding would be there's no dedicated left-turn lane on Crawford Street opposite Crawford Street driveway. The separation between Crawford Street driveway opening and the Willow Drive, less than three vehicle lengths. Limiting the Crawford Street driveway to a right-in, right-out opening would reduce the number of potential vehicle conflicts points from 10 or to two at that location. And the last one is the Federal Highway Administration Traffic Safety Research indicates that 72% of the accidents of the driveway entrance involve a left-turn vehicle, limiting access to the right and right-out movements. At the driveway location will enhance public safety. The number of fueling stations would increase from four to 20. Fueling stations in the existing convenience store would double in size under the Quick Shop plan, which will have the potential to increase traffic in and out of the site, which could result in doubling the vehicle trips in and out of this site under most conservation traffic projections. And the follow, final one, we'd be improved access to the Centennial Road has been provided to the site by vacation of the surplus right-of-way, which is not available today by Centennial Road. Crawford Street intersection is signalized, signalized and it provides protected left-turning movements onto Crawford Street to allow the vehicle existing in the convenience store to turn back onto I-35.
And are we including the approval of the one-lot plat discussed in item 3C?
That would be a separate motion and vote.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for interrupting. Again, I do think in that those other aspects do represent deviations, it would be helpful for there to be some articulation of the commission's basis for those deviations as well.
The sign specifically and the landscaping requirements.
Yes.
Yeah, is there?
Yep.
I guess they're inside here, huh?
Yep.
As in, as far as to the sign, I believe that due to raised elevation of the Crawford
Street Bridge and the business buildings on the north Crawford Street extending west, the extension of a 70-foot sign appears to be acceptable to be viewed by I-35 traffic in which they're looking for that to happen. The, the, the extension of the driveways from 30 feet minimum to allow for the fueling of delivery trucks and RVs vehicles pulling trailers to attempting to enter in and out of the Crawford Street and the Willow Street exit as well as Centennial Road. So I think that's probably a good idea to be able to extend that in excess of 30 feet. And then the last one, what are we talking about, the landscape in the right-of-way?
Right. Justification for including their inability to provide all the landscaping green space on their own site.
Based on the depth of the total lot of 9,870 square feet, the front yard landscape area is required along Centennial Road, Crawford Street and Willow Drive frontage on the site. And only 3,200 square feet of the front green space has been provided on Quick Shop property. The remaining green space shown on Quick Shop's plan to locate anything butting Centennial Road and Willow Drive away. Do I need to base all four of these on their counsel?
Those that you believe are supportive of the action.
Yeah. And number three, sufficient right-of-way areas available, particular at the Centennial-Crawford intersection to provide additional front yard and gateway landscaping. Public right-of-way of the budding Quick Shop site and Quick Shop has expressed in willingness to enter into a right-of-way maintenance agreement to enhance and maintain the right-of-way of budding the convenience store in the community gateway location to make up for the shortfall of the Quick Shop property. Those are my facts and findings on those three alternatives.
Do those facts and findings need to be a part of the motion?
They are assumed to be.
Yes, I'd make that as part of my motion.
Does a second, the second agrees with those findings?
And we would, we would want to clarify that the motion includes the conditions that are identified on page 10 of your staff report, that those are conditions of the zoning approval change.
There are seven?
Yeah, there are seven conditions on page 10.
And would you like to make those as part of your...
I'd love to. Also make these seven items runoff calculations for the post-development.
I don't think you need to read.
You can, you can refer to those by reference.
I'm going to reference those to page 10, one through seven.
Just point of clarification, Kristin, did you get all that?
With those...
Just kidding.
...recommendations.
Is there further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
For the record, do we have the noes show their hands? Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Boxer, the others are in the affirmative.
And Mr. Norland.
Oh, and Mr. Norland, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right.
I count that motion passed by a vote of five to three. Is that a correct reflection?
We'll move on to the next item on this same subject, 13-3, 3/3A, approval of the one-lot plat.
Just wanted to explain for purposes that the Quick Shop today occupies four platted lots that comprise about 27,000 square feet. They are adding 24, little over 24,000 feet of vacated Centennial Road right-of-way that would be packaged together to create a 51,946-square-foot lot. So the approximate dimensions here are 200 feet east-west and 250 feet north-south. As you well know, the lot has frontage on three streets and they are proposing access to all three streets as we discussed. Since the site access issues have been resolved to the satisfaction of the commission, we would recommend approval of the proposed replat, subject to certain technical corrections being made by the surveyor, and the following conditions, and we identified five conditions. And the first one addressed Mr. Kennedy's question, concern about drainage study to confirm that the, we will not exceed the capacity of the Schilling Road ditch, that restricted access markings will be added to the plat along Crawford and Centennial except for the approved openings on Crawford and Centennial Road as previously discussed, a 10-foot dedication, additional right-of-way on Crawford to provide a uniform 50-foot width. And we would work with the surveyor to add a note indicating that all the existing utility easements on lots 52 through 55, block six of the replat of Edgemere addition are vacated by this plat and that the drawing would be labeled, the Quick Shop addition to the city of Salina and the references on the drawing to the number 793, which would be internal for Quick Shop purposes, those don't need to be on the recorded drawing. So that is our recommendation and we'd be open to any questions about any of those items.
Are there questions of staff? Does the applicant have any further comments?
I don't believe we have any further comments. We'll make the technical corrections and they reflect our site plan openings and easement items and everything.
Great.
Thanks.
Questions for Isaac? Is there, thank you very much, and we'll open it to the public. Does the public have any comment? And back to the commission. Gentlemen, is there a motion on this item or further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve application P-13 slash, or dash three slash 3A with the five staff recommendation items.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
I want to mention on this, if I may, that I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. I've always been in favor of development of the Quick Shop there and that's never been a question. I voted negative on the last motion because I think the planning was not done to the level it should have been done for the city, but I think the overall, the project is going to be a benefit to the city, so I'll be voting yes on this motion.
And I would second Mr. Kennedy's comments, not his motion.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, would you vote with, with your hands? Those in favor, say, raise your hands, please. Any opposed? Well, the item carries.
For the benefit of the applicant, based on our current schedule, these items would go, after our 14-day protest period, would go forward to the city commission on July the 8th for first reading of the ordinance and consideration of the plat.
And we thank Quick Trip and their representatives for their patience. Thank you very much.
If it, you've had your recess into the closed session, it may be appropriate, before we go to the Quail Meadows items, if, if you wanted to offer the members a stretch or bathroom break, we could have a brief recess for that or we can go right to item 4B.
Gentlemen?
Keep on going.
Let's roll.
Okay. I'm going to be brief with this one because I think you're quite familiar with the concept. We had a development review team meeting with, with Stan Biquist, the owner developer of Quail Meadow Estates, and he expressed that nothing seemed to be happening with block eight, which was platted as one large Plan C1 zoning lot along Schilling Road. And he put forward a plan to create some lots in the northeast corner on Eileen Lane for single-family development. We had a plan presented from Roger Simpson to put four, fourplexes along Kwood Drive, leaving the southeast corner basically as an open slate. And he has decided to come back and fill in the rest of the gap there with a plan to rezone the southeast quadrant of this block from PC1 to R2. And so this is very similar to the request and a mirror image of the request on Eileen Lane. The difference being that Mr. Biquist has requested R2 zoning, which allows for either single-family or two-family dwellings to be constructed. And his thoughts behind that is he might wish to construct townhomes backing up to Schilling Road, similar to what we have on Jack Circle to the west. So I wanted to clarify that it's R2 instead of R1 and R2 allows single-family dwellings, but it also allows the possibility of two-family dwellings in the form of townhomes or duplexes. And he believes that the existing C1 zoning inhibits his ability to use the, the site in the, in the most beneficial manner, that the, the R2 zoning, there's a better market for residential than the Plan C1 at this time. The water supply, fire protection, sanitary sewer, all of that can be addressed fairly efficiently. There's no stormwater detention here as there's a fee charge to use the Schilling Road ditch for detention. We're also in the Coronado South Middle and Salina South enrollment areas. And so what we'll have here is either something that will add 14 or 28 additional, anywhere in that range, no fewer than 14, no more than 28 living units on this property, which still falls within the low-density classification. So your options here would be to approve R2 zoning as requested, to do a lesser change to R1 if you feel a compelling reason for that. You could table this if you feel like you need additional information, or you could recommend denial of the rezoning request, provided appropriate findings are made. On page six, we've outlined four findings we think would support the request for residential zoning here. And again, this is already approved as a conversion to single-family lots. This is the Roger Simpson fourplex development here. There's a water line that's been installed here already. And so this, this will create a, a loop there and the plan is to create 14 additional lots for a single-family or two-family dwellings. And you can see their depth and width-wise, they're a mirror image of the Eileen Lane lots. So with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Questions of staff?
Dean, if you think about Sierra Drive, that addition that was put in there, were those lots on Sierra specifically R2 and then everything else that was in was R1?
Yes.
My, my concern is that if you blanket that whole thing R2, somebody's going to build a single-family home, then a single-family home, somebody's going to purchase that, I know this too well, and then there's going to go duplex next door. Is there not, just, I feel more comfortable having R2 specifically on certain lots than to have it just any one of them and then they start building single-family homes and then later on, I believe it, what was it, maybe three meetings ago, we had a gentleman who was very concerned because he wasn't told that there was an R2 behind there. Now, again, my response is, you probably should check that out and have your person who sold it to you or do your due diligence through your title, chain of title to figure that out. But I'm in support of it, I just thought I would bring that up. It's odd, I would think, to have the whole thing be in R2 when we know it's maybe going to be all single-family.
Well, we can, we could let Mr. Malinowski address that one option that's there that is not spelled out, but is a variation of that, is that these are R1, single-family. You could recommend that these all be R1, single-family and that the R2 be limited to the south side. We'd want to get Mr. Malinowski's thoughts on that as representative for Mr. Biquist. But the, the, the thought is that backing up townhomes here, it becomes the, the buffer from here, this arterial street to here. I can see your point about single-family here and a two-family there that doesn't mix very well. The, the difference is on, on Sierra Drive, it's all uniformly, two units all along the north side and you don't have the, any other units on the opposite side facing. But I would defer to Mr. Malinowski on what the thoughts were, but one, one thing would, option would be to say this is all single-family and, and this is the R2.
Other questions of staff? May we hear from the applicant? Your name and address for our secretary.
My name's Sam Malinowski with Call Valley Engineering, 2319 North Jackson Junction City, 66441. In my discussions with Stan, his intent is to put townhomes, you know, if he does townhomes, up next is Schilling. I don't think he's going to have a problem with, if, if we do that. I mean, of course, he'd rather have R2 so he has the option. I mean, of course, he'd rather have R2, so he has the option, you know, open for whatever he wants to do. And we are downzoning from commercial to begin with, so we are making things better. So, I mean, he'd like to leave his options open, but I know in all my discussions with Stan, he's always, you know, like Dean said, he wants to have that separation, I mean, because he's, he's got to sell the lots, he's, I think he's sold, I think he's sold all the lots up there on Eileen right now, and, you know, he's in the business to be a good neighbor, so I don't think he'd have a problem with that. I mean, it makes sense. But, we're in agreement with everything else, all the recommendations. I've got plans approved for the infrastructure.
He's sold all the lots on Eileen as single-family homes?
Yes.
And those, those, it's all been made aware that may be, it would be commercial, but maybe duplexes or whatever.
I can't speak with Stan, I assume, I mean, that they've been...
The lots to the north of Al have been purchased either by Kelly Dunn or Craig Piercy, and they are aware of Mr. Biquist's request for R2 zoning. That, that doesn't mean the prospective purchasers of the property there, the people notified were the current record owners, not prospective buyers. But, the one alternative that is a hybrid or variety of the ones that we laid out is to make the south tier of lots R2 and downzone the other ones to R1. You can be more restrictive, you can't be less restrictive.
I didn't want to lead, I don't want to confine the developer to do what he wants to with his land, I'm just, I'm pointing, I was just trying to figure, I've never, the first single-family home that goes in is going to set precedence, the general public is not going to go, oh, that looks like it's all townhomes now, or that you have the option to put that in. Once a single-family, now, if the first one that goes in is a townhome, people then will typically ask the question, is that all duplex or townhome?
Right.
R2 development? But, if the first two or three homes that go in are all single-family, it's assumed to the general public that everything is all single-family there, and I just would hate for that to be an issue for any family, putting their money down on a home to find out later that if they didn't want to be next to a duplex or a townhome, that, it's just, it's interesting.
And I don't even know how much awareness there is of it, but on Wildcat Circle, there's a tier of about six lots that all back up to the flood control levee. Those six lots were all zoned R2 to allow for townhomes, and so far, the only interest in purchasing and building there has been for single-family homes. So, even the R2 lots on Wildcat Circle have been, which is an option under R2, of course, is always to build a single-family home. But, I have looked at Mr. Biquist's perspective covenants, and if you have R2 zoning on that north tier of lots, it's still going to leave a choice, and people would have to understand that they could build a home with a duplex or townhome next to them.
From a planning standpoint, I don't really know about this, but from a planning standpoint, having townhomes across the street from single-family, is that normal?
You have it in some of the neighborhoods east of Ohio, in the Faith Edition, on Mound View, and some of those streets in there. It's not particularly common, and we try to, we try to pair them up so they're, that are similar uses facing each other, and that, that may be one of the reasons why he was looking at R2 for the whole thing, is just that it would make for compatibility facing that, and our experience is that if a duplex or townhome backs up to you, you notice that less than if a duplex or townhome faces you, because it has the multiple driveways and garages. So, there's usually more of an impact on the front side than the back side. That's what I thought.
Architecturally, he's intent is to make them all similar, I mean, make, you know, any duplexes will be similar to the single-family, so, other than, obviously, they're going to have more garages.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would open this up to the public. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to address this application? You're being done, I'll be, none, I'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Gentlemen, is there more discussion on this item, or is there a motion?
Well, it's 10 till 7. I'll make a motion.
I'll do it if I have to.
Yep. On application Z-13-4, I think that I would be comfortable with the townhomes on the one side and the, or R2 on one side and R1 on the other side, and using the staff findings in support of that motion, changing from R1, from C1 to R1 and R2.
Is there a second?
Well, for a point of clarification, I just want to be sure we're, we're okay. We can't, the request was for R2 for the whole development. We're okay to make a motion for R1 on one side of the road and R2 on the other?
Yes, you can do something that is more restrictive.
Wanted to make sure we're, we're okay with that.
Not less restrictive.
I'd second that motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
But if the applicant... I just want to make sure that if the applicant, I guess it's not my decision to look out for whoever, but if the applicant now decides that somebody wants to go in and put all duplexes there, now we're restricting him from that being able to be done.
That is, based on Mr. Miccel's motion, that is correct. His, his motion was to rezone these to R1 and these to R2. So, the commission would have to decide if you are comfortable taking the choice away from the applicant, or you would rather leave the choice of single-family versus two-family to the applicant.
If the applicant doesn't accept our, I mean, if we pass in the motion and he doesn't like that, then he can come back and request a different one?
He can. Your recommendation would go to the City Commission, and he would have an opportunity to request that they take a different view than that motion.
Still, on the south, on the south side is R2, you could still build single-family homes on the south side with a duplex.
No, but it's not attractive to build single-family homes. You're not going to build, I mean, I'm not going to say you're not, I want to...
You could still do it.
You could still do it, I'm just stating that it's probably, it's his land, I guess, and it's hard for me to...
Obviously, we'd like to have R2 in the whole thing, leaves most options. I mean, with the fourplexes over here on, on the west, we're kind of, you're already going to have single-family buttered up to fourplexes. But, you know, like Dean says, I mean, if, I don't think Stan's going to have a big problem with that, because he's always talked about the townhomes next to Schilling, but if he does, I mean, like Dean says, we could take it up with, with City Commission and see what, you know, we have that option.
Let them make a decision.
Well, by the same process, if we made it all R1 and Mr. Biquist wanted to have R2 on that facing, you could request that at the time it's heard before the commission.
The request in front of us...
The request, you need, the request in front of you was specifically made, the request on Eileen was R1, the request here is R2, and R2 preserves the choice of doing two-family or single-family on all 14 lots. The motion that Mr. Miccel made eliminates the choice here and says only single-family can be built there, and there's a choice here. So, by, by my notes, we have a motion for Mr. Miccel, no second yet, but the commission...
I made a second, I'm second guessing my second.
I guess, technically, we already have R1 buttered up to commercial right now, I mean, today, because the whole, the whole thing is zoned.
Right. It was, it was on C1, the R2 is a downzoning from the C1. The question, it becomes one of compatibility. So, we, we have a motion and a second for R1 North and R2 South. The commission would need to dispense with that motion in some fashion, as long as everybody understands that if that motion is a recommendation to do R1 North and R2 South, then it eliminates the choice on the north lots and says those will be single-family, just as on Eileen.
I don't know, I don't even know if you can rescind a second. I, I just really, I, I, there's nothing developed there. It looks like appropriate area for R2. I think property owners, when they go to purchase something, have some responsibility, look at the zoning and decide what might be across from. If they, if you want to vote the motion now, that'd be fun...
I'll make this easy. I'll rescind my motion.
There you go, I'll rescind my second.
Okay. And I will resubmit that motion as, approving the application as presented with the staff findings.
And I'd second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? No. I'd just like comment, I just always think it's a nice idea to give them what they asked for and not tinker with it, so, I'm, thank you for rescinding and restating the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move forward to the next item.
Next item is a replat of that remaining portion of the, the block into the layout that John had up there before he lost his screen, and that is the layout that had a set of lots, seven on the north side and seven on the south side of a new street that would be known as Marla Court, and this is not constructed, and we would have water line coming down here and tying there, a sewer line extended, a new public street constructed. When that was complete, he would have 14 building lots for one or two-family construction. And as Mr. Malinowski mentioned, he has already submitted infrastructure plans, and we would compliment Mr. Malinowski and Mr. Biquist. We sent the plat out for technical comments from all the utility companies, Register of Deeds, County Surveyor, and none of them had any comments or corrections on the plat, except for a couple minor surveying things. So, we believe the plat is in order for your approval, and we refer you to page six there, five recommended conditions, that Mr. Biquist would be responsible for installation of all improvement shown on the preliminary plat drawing and infrastructure plan drawings, and he'd have the choice of doing that privately or petitioning for a benefit district. All the utilities, including the electric, would be placed underground. The final design plans approved by the city engineer. There is a lot grading plan for this set of lots here, and so, that, that would need to be approved by the city engineer, would be part of the covenants, and then, once the certificate of completion for the public improvements is issued by engineering and all impact fees have been paid, then permits can be issued. So, our recommendation is to approve the replat with those five conditions.
The Schilling Road ditch drainage fee, I see they've got a way to calculate that at .129 per cubic foot. Do we know what the cubic footage is? How's that get computed?
Mr. Malinowski does a calculation. He looks at the street, the driveways, the buildings. He calculates the cubic foot of runoff that will be directed from this area into the Schilling Road ditch. That is calculated into a fee, and then that is paid to the city of Salina, is basically buying storage in the Schilling Road ditch.
Any other questions of staff? Applicant?
No comment. I agree with everything you guys, all the stipulations of staff. Happy answering questions.
Just for me, how much runoff you got? What's it cost you for the runoff per...
I honestly, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Most of the numbers per phase has been running somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 for the impact fee.
For the whole area?
For the, each, each phase, each sub-area. And so, instead of paying a lump sum for the whole subdivision, it's broken down by phases, but if, if you compare that to the amount of land given up in the construction and the maintenance of a detention basin, it's actually less expensive to pay to store water in the ditch than it is to construct your own detention, so.
Thank you. Any questions, then? Thank you, Mr. Malinowski. Is there, are there any questions or comments from the public? Back to the commission then, staff has recommended approval. Is there further discussion, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve application PO-4-Dash-3C with the five staff recommendations as included in our packet.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The item carries. Number five, application Z-13-6, an amendment of the Articles Four to require location permits.
We're going to be brief and not expect any formal action on this tonight. We basically, this is to take the temperature of the current planning commission, just to see, we, it's shed season, and we have, we find having continuing issues with our residential building code, which allows sheds that are, don't exceed 120 square feet in area, not, they don't require a building permit, and yet, we still have rules in the zoning code as to far as where those sheds can be. And previously, the planning commission expressed support for a concept that regardless of size, that anybody who wants to put up a storage shed in their residential yard, obtain a location permit from the planning department, just to make sure that the location they have, they have requested is, doesn't violate any setback or other restrictions. And the genesis of this was, we had a property owner who got a violation notice and a variance denied because they wanted to put a shed in the non-addressed side of their front yard, and they said they would respect the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, but wanted staff and Board of Zoning Appeals and commissioners to take notice of the other hundred of those sheds that were around the community, and so, we, we said, there's two choices. One is step-up enforcement action on the sheds that had been placed in this non-addressed side. Some of them are less noticeable because they're behind fences, or the other option was to modify the ordinance to conform with what appears to be community norms and practices. Previous planning commission said they'd like to allow for that, but they still wanted a process where homeowners would need to get a location permit to make sure that their shed was in an approved location, and we just wanted to take your temperature and see if this commission was still of that view.
Didn't we hash this out extensively about two years ago, and then we decided something at that time?
You're correct, you're correct in your dates.
Jeff Denton?
I mean, what did we decide then? We decided not to require a location permit?
We decide, the planning commission decided that they would like to require a location permit, and that they would like to create a mechanism by which, if it was behind a screening fence, that someone could have a, you can fence this area here and would allow for a storage shed in those locations if it was behind a screening.
So, why are we rehashing it? If we made the decision...
You're rehashing it because that was never put into an ordinance form that went to the City Commission for adoption, and in order to do that, it requires a formal recommendation on an amendment from you, but before we went there, we wanted to take your temperature and see if this group, being that that was two years ago, still feels the same way.
So, right now, you do not need to get a permit for a 10 by 10?
Well, here's, here's what happens. I want to put up a 10 by 10 shed in my yard, and so, I call up the city-county building front desk and say, I've got, want to put up a 10 by 10 shed in my yard, do I need a permit for that? No, a permit's not required for that. Click. Then, they go and put the shed up, but they put it in a location where the zoning ordinance doesn't allow it, and then, planning staff is chasing... And then, planning staff is chasing after the fact that they have put it in a location where it's not permitted. As a staff, we believe it would be better if they called and said, we want to put up a 10 by 10 shed. And we said, the zoning ordinance requires that you get a location permit for every shed, so we can make sure that it's in an approved location before you put it up.
But does Building Services have time to go out and do the location?
This is going to be planning staff's work, because we spend three times more time chasing after sheds that have been put up in wrong locations than we would if we worked with homeowners up front as far as where their sheds could go.
Well, why wouldn't you just charge them a $10 building permit or something? That way, it's all done.
Because the model building codes that come out exempt sheds of that size from getting a building permit. If I want to put up a 10 by 16 shed in my yard, I have to come down city-county building and get a building permit. If I want to put up a 10 by 10 shed, I don't have to get a building permit. And from planners' perspective, they're the same. It is just that the model building codes that are out there exempt, and the primary reason is the foundational requirements for a shed less than 120 square feet are less than what you'd have to put under a larger shed.
So what's the magic word you were calling it, rather than a permit?
I'm calling it a location permit instead of a building permit. We're not going to look at footings, or we're not going to look at foundations or anything. We just want to be able to issue a permit to say, here's your yard, you may place your 10 by 10 shed here, and if you place it here, you'll meet all the setbacks, you won't be interfering with utilities.
Now, are you doing that for them? If they give you the address, you're doing that for them? Or do they have to bring you down their plan?
They have to bring in their application, and we will help them locate it.
Is there a fee for the...
There would be a fee associated with that.
But there isn't now.
No. And we don't have the authority to require it now. The reason this is in front of you is that it would be a zoning ordinance requirement that, before you put up any type of shed, you'd have to get a location permit.
Put a doggy door in if they're okay.
I would suggest it's not a bad idea because of the, at least now, with that, with the location permit, it would give city staff an opportunity to work with the property owner and say, it really can't go here. The problem you face now, it still can't go there, but they don't know they can't put it there. Innocently, they put it there, and then there's a battle on. I've spent money to put it there. And then you have to go out and have a movie shed, which causes all kinds of hurt feelings.
That is correct. So what we don't like is having a set of rules to enforce, but not have the ability to advise people up front.
Yeah, you can't be proactive. Because as you said, they say, no permit required, and put it wherever I want, I guess.
So what's the cost that you're, if you were to change this, what's the permit cost then to have that?
There would probably be a flat fee of somewhere between $20 and $25, which is what the going rate is for a building permit for a shed.
Could we make any kind of a recommendation or stipulation to individuals who sell storage sheds, that they make property owners aware of this? Because I could probably go to any number of big box places, have them load a shed on my trailer this afternoon, and drop it off.
Well, I will tell you how, because I have lots of, I spend more time in the field on storage sheds than I do on commercial projects. But I will tell you that the way it works for Sturdy Built, or Dirksen, or a lot of these places that pre-manufacture these sheds, they will say, we will sell this to you, we will install it for you, here's the agreed-upon price, here's all the terms. However, it is the responsibility of the property owner to obtain all necessary permits. And in the building permit world, it's the obtainer of the permit who's responsible. So I have been in a position where Sturdy Built, or Dirksen, has the only piece of equipment to move a shed that was put on top of a sewer pump station. And then, I have, since they didn't pull the permit, and they're not the responsible party under the permit, I have to deal with the owner, who is not capable of moving the shed, only Sturdy Built, or Dirksen is. And it's just a lot easier to do it up front than it is after the fact to try to get somebody out to move it. But it's, we've had people put sheds over the top of a buried sewer pump station, and that is not, that is not a good plan. And this, this model would be, there's basically only one type of structure you can put up that you don't need a permit for, and that's a shed 10 by 12 or less. And what planning would like to do is plug that gap and say, doesn't matter what size your shed is, you still need to get a permit, so we can advise you where it can go.
Plus, they can put them in, right now, without a permit, oftentimes, they put them in the easements, even if it's an outside yard, they set them in the easements, which technically, you can't do either.
That is correct. And as someone who had a power outage two times in three days, I have had situations where we've had to find somebody with a tractor to move a shed, so that West Dark could get to a pole to repair a power outage. And so, there, the best way that we can educate people is by being able to talk to them about where these things can go. And if you simply say, no, you don't need a permit, we don't get a chance to educate them. So before we went any further with formal amendments or anything else, we wanted to take your temperature and say, are you generally supportive of requiring a locational permit regardless of size?
My temperature is, I'm supportive of that. I do think that Commissioner Box's question, maybe I'm wrong, Jerry, but that is, am I right? The question is, is there any way in statute you can make sellers of said storage sheds responsible for making the buyer aware?
Well, we have the same issue with swimming pools, as their, people are upstairs are happy to remind me, and what you will find at different places, if you go out to Walmart, you will find a laminated city brochure advising purchasers of pools at Walmart, that they need to obtain a permit, and here's the rules about where you can place it. And those are sent out to all the sellers. And certainly, if you were to move forward with this, we would put together an informational brochure, and we would provide it to Sturdy Built, and Dirksen, and all these providers, and say, here's our brochure, and you need to advise your clients as to where these can and cannot go.
If you move forward with this, you'll address, what are you going to do about the 100 that gentleman mentioned that are already in violation?
What we're proposing to do is, what the planning commission agreed to before was, if I'm in a corner lot in a front yard, and I am behind a solid screening fence, then basically, that is permissible, and that cuts the 100 down to a dozen. So if you drive down south Ohio, like I do every day, and you look at the corner of McAdams and Ohio, you will see a fence out along Ohio, and right behind that fence is a storage building that's in their front yard. That's not supposed to be there. You drive a little farther south, at Ellsworth in Ohio, and over on the east side, there's a house there, and between the house and the Ohio Street is a storage building in the front yard that's not supposed to be there, but it's much more noticeable on Ellsworth because there's no fence. Whereas on McAdams, you have to look twice to notice that it's there. And the previous planning commission had said, well, they're okay with it in the front yard if you already have a fence there. It's not as visually obtrusive. So if that change was made, basically, all those would be approved retroactively, and it would take the list down much shorter. So if there's a general consensus that you're supportive of the locational permit process, then we'll flesh that out for you.
My temperature is kind of tired right now, but I'm, since I'm feeling kind of punchy, I want to ask maybe a dumb question. Why is the rear yard setback on a non-corner lot different than a corner lot? We've got three on one and five on the other.
On a corner lot, by definition, a corner lot has two front yards and two side yards and no rear yard. On a conventional lot, you have a front yard, two sides, and a rear. So if I have a corner lot, my minimum setbacks on the two backsides are seven and a half feet, whereas on a rear yard, it's 25 feet. So that's why it's shown differently there.
Do we have a consensus for staff? Everybody cool with the location?
It sounds like staff already knows what makes it easier for them, and I think that would be the route we go. I'm good with that.
Your...
They need to talk to the local, they can't do it.
Your reward today is that you don't have to meet on the 2nd of July.
Well, that's not...
And I will, Mr. Byquist was unable to attend today's meeting, even though he had requested it. And his idea was that he would request that you continue the hearing on his item to July 2nd. And I said, why don't you send Mr. Malinowski to represent you, and then we don't have to continue your hearing to July 2nd? And so, he went with that option, and so now you don't have to meet on July 2nd.
Mr. Malinowski knew it'd be 7 o'clock before he got here. He wouldn't have done it.
On the 16th, Mr. Craig Piercy and Mr. Byquist are proposing a plat of the property at the southeast corner of Schilling and Ohio, which is directly opposite of Stone Creek and across from Liberty Edition.
Stone Lake.
Yeah, Stone Lake, not to be confused with the more prominent Stone Creek. And then, we have a request that is on Cherry Street, south of State Street, instead of North Street. And that is initiated by Mr. Wally Story, so you can hold him responsible for that. But that will be on July 16th.
Do we have a new member of the planning staff?
I did want, we were going to do that at the introduction, but I wanted, at the start of the meeting, but patiently wait to introduce. This is Ashley Klingler. She is a planning intern from the planning program at Kansas State, and she is working with us this summer on a variety of projects. This is her first planning commission meeting. She's actually going to be working with you later this summer on a study session on neighborhood centers and commercial centers. She's doing some research on that, and will be educating staff and yourselves about those concepts, so.
Welcome. Thank you and welcome.
Are they paying you well, Ashley?
Welcome to this wonderful brief.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Other matters?
We just told her this is not a typical length of a planning commission meeting.
Oh, I don't know about that.
We're adjourned.